Good evening. Good evening and buenas noches. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Madera City Council. Tonight is Wednesday, the fourth, two thousand twenty-four. It is now six P. M. The Madera City Council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three. Enter I D eight forty-seven seven one three seven eight five nine eight hashtag. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at two oh five West Fourth Street, Madera, California, nine three six three seven. I hereby call this meeting to order at six P. M. Alicia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montez. He's actually, he'll be here a little bit later. Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Mejia.
Here.
And Councilmember Villegas.
Here.
Thank you, Alicia. Would you all please rise for the invocation led tonight by Pastor Roger Leach of the Valley West Christian Center?
Thank you so much, Mayor, and all of the city council. We just again, our honor tonight. Lord, we thank you that as we have gathered together tonight, we thank you for those that have served in the past, and we thank you for those that will be serving in the future. We ask your blessing upon them. We pray for their health and their strength. We pray that each day that they will be filled with wisdom. And Lord, tonight, that as we celebrate out of those words that were written in Luke, chapter number two, verse number eleven through number fourteen, it says, "For there is born to you this day in the city of David a Savior, who is Christ the Lord. And this will be a sign unto you, that you will find the babe wrapped in swaddling claws, lying in a manger. And suddenly there was with the angel, a multitude of heavenly hosts praising God and saying, glory to God in the highest, and on earth, peace and good will to men." Lord, we pray that over our city, that there will be peace, and there will be goodwill to all people. Lord, we thank you tonight that as we come into this time of celebration of giving, and again, remembering all of the things that are good, we pray that you will crown this night and crown this city with your loving kindness, and we ask those things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance will be led tonight by Councilmember Artemio Villegas.
Praise salute. I pledge the allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. I will ask any members of the public if they have any comments on the agenda. Alicia, do we have any Zoom or email comments on the agenda?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'll now bring, we'll close public comment, bring it back to my colleagues for questions and/or a motion for the agenda.
I'll move to adopt the agenda as presented, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, we have a tie. We motion to approve the agenda by Councilmember Rodriguez, second by Mayor Protem Gallegos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Agenda is approved.
Excuse me, Mayor, if I may, Shannon. We were going to pull item B ten from the agenda out of, off of consent.
Yes, City Council, if you wouldn't mind amending or making a new motion to approve the agenda without item B one, that would be very, B ten.
Mr. Mayor, I'll rescind that.
Calendar.
I'll rescind that motion, make the modification of approving the agenda as presented with the exception of item B ten.
I second it.
Okay. Motion to approve with the exceptions by Councilmember Rodriguez, second by Mayor Protem Gallegos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, the ayes have it. All righty. We will now move on to City Council reorganization. Item number one is declaring the results of the two thousand twenty-four general election, oaths of office, and annual recognition. Alicia?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The general this item that we are gonna be reviewing this evening is declaring the results of the two thousand twenty-four general election, oaths of office, and annual reorganization. The general election was held on Tuesday, November fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Four council seats were on the ballot, mayor-at-large, and districts two, four, and six. I will now read the results. Following this, I will ask the council to consider adopting the resolution and naming the individuals who received the highest number of votes in each district as elected. For mayor, office of mayor. C. C. Gallegos, five thousand two hundred and ninety-nine votes. Santos Garcia, five thousand thirty-six votes. Wayne Padilla, two thousand six hundred and eighty-five votes. Lucy Salazar, two thousand and thirty-two votes. For District Two, Jose Rodriguez, two thousand six hundred and thirty-one votes. For District Four, Anita Denis-Evans, eight hundred and eighty-four votes. Derek Robinson, Senior, five hundred and thirty-five votes. District Six, John Jasper, nine hundred and twenty-seven votes. And Artemio Villegas, for a thousand and four votes. The four individuals with the highest votes are C. C. Gallegos, Jose Rodriguez, Anita Evans, and Artemio Villegas. I might turn it over to Mayor Garcia to call for action on the resolution.
That's the mayor who no longer will be mayor in about thirty minutes, fifteen minutes. That's C. C. She's the one who won. Awesome, you can.
Next to him.
Rodriguez.
I think we need to.
Pardon me, I think the people online have not muted themselves.
I'm turning back over to you, Mayor, for action on the resolution.
So then we will. Excuse me, so we will be asking for public comment and then moving forward, bring it back to the council? I'm kind of confused at this point.
Shannon, or?
Yes, because there's been action taken on this item, you're approving something, there has to be an opportunity for public comment. Traditionally, most people, most jurisdictions, nobody comments, but we still make that offer.
And those are under item one, two, and three? Or one at a time?
It's under item one.
Okay. So we'll take one at a time? Correct, Shannon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This, this is only done every four years, so it's, forgive me. Okay, so under item one. Item one is, the recommendation is the council reviews the Madera County Elections Office canvas for elected official positions and take the following action. Under item one, by motion, adopt a resolution declaring the results of the two thousand twenty-four general election, certified by the Madera County Elections Office. Are there any public comments under item one? Good so far? Seeing no public comments? Alicia, did you have something? Okay. Under item number two. Performance of ceremonial.
I'm gonna head and make a motion to approve item one, one.
Second.
All right. So, motion to approve item one by Councilmember Rodriguez. Second by Council, Mayor Protem Gallegos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now I believe we need to go under the performance of ceremonial oaths of office, Alicia?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. I will now begin with Mayor-elect C. C. Gallegos, and if she would please introduce her special guest that will be administering the oath this evening.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez. I have Maddie Mendez here, a personal friend for probably over, I'm not gonna say my age, over forty years, and has been Team C. C. on making sure that I got this seat. So she's here to give me the oath and put me in office. Thank you, Maddie.
Please raise your right hand, say aye and your name, then repeat the oath after me. I, Cecilia C. C. Gallegos. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. That I will support and defend. The Constitution. The Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the State of California. The State of California. Against all enemies. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. And allegiance. To the Constitution. To the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the State of California. Of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. That I take this obligation freely. Without any. Without any. Mental reservation. Mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will. That I will. Well and faithfully. Well and faithfully. Discharge the duties. Discharge the duties. Upon which. Upon which. I am about to enter. In. About which. In about which I'm about to enter. Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay. I will now. Excuse me, I will now call on Councilmember Jose Rodriguez, and if he would please introduce his special guest that will be administering the oath of office.
Ah, yes. With me tonight are my beautiful wife, Carmina, my daughter Vivian, and my son Vincent Rodriguez that I've known for seventeen years. And, and he too was Team Rodriguez, so come on up, son. Let's get this going.
Please raise your right hand and repeat the oath after me. Say aye and your name.
I, Jose Rodriguez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental.
Without any mental.
Reservation or purpose of evasion.
Reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
I will now call on Councilmember Anita Evans, and if she would please introduce her special guest this evening.
Blessings each and every one of you. Tonight is such a special night for each one of us, and I thank God for bringing so many people in. The young lady that is going to be giving me my oath of office is named after my daughter. My daughter was Alicia Brown. And when I met Alicia, she came to me and she identified herself as Alicia Brown. And from then until now, she has been my baby. I would also like to acknowledge my grandson, Jacob Williams. He is the baby grand of the whole family, so I just want everyone to know. But anyway, I love you guys. I thank everyone that is here for me, and I thank everyone else that is here as well. So God bless each and every one of you, and here we go.
Please raise your right hand, say aye and your name, and then repeat the oath after me.
I, Anita Evans.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
I will now call on Councilmember Artemio Villegas and ask if he would please introduce his guest that will be administering the oath.
Raise your right hand. Say aye and your name.
I, Artemio Villegas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemy.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
Through the Constitution.
Through the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
State of California.
That I take this obligation.
That I take this obligation.
Freely.
Freely.
Without any.
Without any.
Mental reservation.
Mental reservation. Reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
That I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which.
Upon which.
I am about to enter.
About to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez. I would like to just take a few minutes to give my colleagues who just got sworn in an opportunity to say a few words before we continue. I will start with Councilwoman Anita Evans.
To the city of Madera. I thank you for recognizing me. I thank you for having faith in me to do my duty and to be able to stand before each and every one of you and to pledge that I will give my heart and my soul to this city. I moved here in two thousand thirteen, and since then, I came out fighting. I took office for the first time in two thousand twenty, and I must say I am very proud to be the first African-American woman to hold this seat for the second term. So to each and every one of you, God bless you, and thank you so very much.
Congratulations, Councilwoman Evans. Councilmember Jose Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Gallegos. Sure that feels good, right? So with that, I just wanted to thank all of you for making it out tonight, and really thanking the city of Madera for entrusting in me. Although I went and opposed this time around, I, I know the battles that are when you're campaigning, so that goes out to all of my colleagues that have campaigned in this last election. But really, a thank you to the city of Madera. I'm, I'm just very blessed to be in this seat, always looking out in the interest of the community. I have my beautiful wife, Carmina, again, my kids, Vivian and Vincent, helping me, supporting me throughout this stuff, so I really want to make sure that I acknowledge them, but more importantly, acknowledging you. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge also the contribution that our former Mayor Garcia had to this city. Not only as a, his contribution as a council member, but as a mayor as well. I have to admit that a lot of us went through some really tough times throughout this, our tenure here. But, you know, we got through it, and together we were able to move the needle for Madera once again. And we look forward with Mayor Gallegos and this council to move that needle more. So I do appreciate everything that our former Mayor Garcia has brought to the table, his commitment, his dedication to his community, and I wish him well in his new endeavors. So with that, Mayor Gallegos, thank you again, and thank you all.
Congratulations, Councilmember Rodriguez, and if Councilmember Villegas has anything to say?
Thank you, Mayor C. C. Gallegos. First, I want to say thank you to all those registered voters that registered for me, that dressed in me again for the second term. Thank you, every one of you. And I will look forward to continue working for the city of Madera and represent every single person, especially in my district. And thank you all for coming tonight and to see us. The beginning of a new chapter. Representing you in the whole city of Madera. Thank you.
Congratulations. And now my turn. Hopefully you have a good seat because this is about eight pages long. First, I take a great honor to lead this council in the next chapter that we have the next four years. My first hundred days, I have a lot of great ideas, but I'm not going to do it alone. I'm gonna need my fellow council members to move it along with me. So I'm just gonna say a few things. You know me, I talk fast, I'm excited, and I have all this going through my head. The first thing I want to put in place is a veteran military banner program that I'm creating with a past Parks Director of Kerman, my brother Philip here. I also want to put together with my colleagues a Parks and Rec Commission where we have voices that are being heard by this community and appointed by every council member here. I'm looking to move forward in a business-friendly model to bring more businesses to the city with the help of all of you out here and the council that I have here. And also to strengthen, strengthen more of our relationships with our police and fire. That's very important. That you feel that you could call them like you could call us. And there's many more things to come my way. I will be visible in this community. I'm everywhere. I even jump out of bushes, people say. And I'll be one of the hardest-working mayors I think you'll ever see. I'm up late at night doing the job I need to do. And the reason I do that is because I love Madera. Born and raised here, not going anywhere. I bleed Madera. This is my city, and I will make you proud. I would like to introduce my family, my sister, brother-in-law, my nephew, niece, my brother, my sister-in-law, and the Warta family that are like my kids. My kids are under the weather, and I said, don't come and get everybody sick. We all want to stay healthy, and that's going around, so they're watching on, on live on YouTube, so. I had amazing woman by the name of Bertha Franco, my new daughter-in-law, who was my social media, who rocked the house and really did a great job. I have to put a thank you to the neighborhoods for government integrity and accountability of action. I'm not sure who is in charge of that organization, but they went out and did texts and mailers for me, which I didn't have the funds to do, so that was pretty impressive, and I thank them for that. I thank all of you, city of Madera voters that voted for me, all the texts and emails and calls that I've gotten, and even the comments on social media about congratulating me and that are so thrilled to see me in this seat. So packed house says a lot. I feel like sometime I'm like George Bailey on What's a Wonderful Life. I'm not rich, but if I look at the friends and family I have, I feel like I'm the richest woman in the city of Madera right now. I'd like to thank Team C. C. who got paid from, with cookies, to canvas for me, put up signs, take down posters, you name it, and they're here in the audience, so they know who they are. Special thank you goes out to the Fagundes family for their support on this race. My family especially, having to pick up a lot of the duties that I would do that I couldn't do because I was out trying to campaign and win a race. Jim Talbert, my mentor, who is I would like to introduce my family, my sister, brother-in-law, my nephew, niece, my brother, my sister-in-law, and the Wortha family that are like my kids. My kids are under the weather, and I said, don't come and get everybody sick. We all want to stay healthy, and that's going around. So they're watching on live on YouTube. So I had amazing woman by the name of Bertha Franco, my new daughter-in-law, who was my social media, who rocked the house and really did a great job. I have to put a thank you to the neighborhoods for government integrity and accountability of action. I'm not sure who is in charge of that organization, but they went out and did texts and mailers for me, which I didn't have the funds to do. So that was pretty impressive, and I thank them for that. I thank all of you, city of Madera voters that voted for me, all the texts and emails and calls that I've gotten, and even the comments on social media about congratulating me and that are so thrilled to see me in this seat. So packed house says a lot. I feel like sometime I'm like George Bailey on What's a Wonderful Life. I'm not rich, but if I look at the friends and family I have, I feel like I'm the richest woman in the city of Madera right now. I'd like to thank Team CC who got paid from, with cookies to canvas for me, put up signs, take down posters, you name it, and they're here in the audience, so they know who they are. A special thank you goes out to the Fagundes family for their support on this race, my family especially, having to pick up a lot of the duties that I would do that I couldn't do because I was out trying to campaign and win a race. Jim Talbert, my mentor, who is no longer with us, who's always taught me to be positive, keep my head up, and go for what I feel that I can survive. And she's always said, the good Lord has a reason for everything, like my parents would say, and this was a door that opened for me that I wasn't sure I was going to take. And now I see that this community has said, yes, this is the door you need to take, and I took it, and I'm here now, and I want it. I wouldn't be here and doing the things that I do without my mom and dad. They're no longer with us, but their legacy is in place. They worked forty years in Madera Unified School Districts, both of them. I won't be doing forty years at Madera Unified. That's a long time, but I am who I am, and my brothers and sisters are who they are because we had great parents that instilled great values in each and every one of us, and that was to support this community, a servant's heart. We do it for the reason of making it better. I talk to students all over this community as a school teacher, and they're like, why do you do it, Councilwoman? You don't get paid very much. It's not about the money. It's about making Madera great again, and working hard and making it what we need to make it and being proud of it. And lastly, but least, I thank the good Lord. Prayers have been answered. A lot of you were praying for me and doing great things. I did forget before I think the great Lord is those supporters that financially back me. If you look, I didn't have much money. I also had people write letters to the editor, and I thank them for that. It was dear to my heart to hear the backing and support that I had, and because sometimes you always think, well, should I, shouldn't I? And they were like, oh, my gosh, CC, you got to do it. This is you. This is your calling. This is your time. And so thank you for all of your help and encouragement to get me through this process. And with that, I'm here because of the good Lord. He said, CC, I just came off a campaign. A lot was going on. I don't know if you know, I broke my, ripped my calf, so I was bedridden for three months, and it took a lot to get back in the groove of things, but still represented, still do what I needed to do, took phone calls late at night, during the day, recess, after school, you name it. So the good Lord has put me here, and he, I'm going to make him proud. I'm going to work hard. I'm going to pray every night and get up and say, give me what you think I can handle, and I'm going to do what I need to do to get the job done. So thank you all for making it out tonight. I am truly appreciated by looking at all the faces and the support that each and every one of you have to know that you're special to me, and you need anything, we are here for you. We're here to do what we need to do. You contact us. We have that relationships with a lot of you, and we're going to move this city forward. Thank you all. So with that, I'm going to move on to one dash two, which is the consideration, oh, sorry, sorry, I went to, see, I'm so excited. I'm going to move to the council to recognize the outgoing elected official for the years of service. So if Mayor Garcia could come to the podium, please. Now I get to get closer to you. I would like to give this opportunity to thank our outgoing mayor, Santos Garcia, for his four years of dedication service to the city of Madera. Councilman Member Rodriguez said it very well. He dedicated his time away from his family, his grandchildren, to serve this community as the best as he could with the help of this entire council. We have moved so much forward. Mayor Garcia came in with COVID, which wasn't easy. We were all on Zoom, so that was a very difficult time for the city, but we have overcome it, and with the mayor who has shown leadership, and we will continue to carry on all the good projects that we had put forth, and I appreciate, and I know my fellow council members are there with me, and we say, thank you, Santos Garcia, for all that you have done, and you will be dear to our heart from this day on.
For Anita. I never once pounded the gavel, by the way, not in the, not in the two years on council or the four years as a mayor. Before I begin today, I want to acknowledge, as I've said many times, that the working in politics is all about relationships, and the relationships that we build show us the way, and we do things cooperatively. I was fortunate enough to work for over thirty-one years in the United States Postal Service, where I developed relationships with our elected officials in Washington, D.C., in the state of California, and here locally within our jurisdictions, within our communities here. And those relationships paid off when the hospital closed, when the trunk line went down, when we had the problems in our communities with all kinds of issues with our police not being funded, our fire department not being funded. So I want to acknowledge Congressman John Duarte. I want to acknowledge Senator Padilla, who represents us in Washington, D.C. I want to, I want to acknowledge Senator Ana Caballero and Assemblywoman Ismeralda Soria. All of these representatives that we've elected and sent to represent us, no matter what jurisdiction, all have come and helped us in our community. So I wanted to acknowledge them and thank them for doing what they did to help us in our community. Second of all, all of the things that we've done and that I've been able to do here in Madera has been because I have the cooperation and the work ethic that my colleagues on the, on the dais, on the city council, have worked together to move forward. So when I mention that Madera is in a better place than it was in 2018 when we got here, it's because of the work that we did together. Now, if you remember 2018, we were under a $1.75 million deficit, and we had been running that deficit for years. And when you have a deficit, you're basically running the government by credit card, and you're running the government by credit card, you cannot pay your employees adequately, you cannot give them health care adequately and pensions to make sure that there, you have a happy workforce. And by immediately stepping in and eliminating that deficit that we had had all these years, we made our city better, starting in 2018, and that had not happened prior to 2018. Now, immediately during my first year as a rookie city council member, thirty families were being kicked out of the Laguna Loz apartments during Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's. I don't know if you remember that. There was thirty families, and where were they going to go? Where were they going to go live? If we have a deficit of housing in Madera, where were these thirty families going to go? So we came up with this idea, and I got actually help from Assemblywoman Soria before she, when she was the city councilwoman in Fresno, that we could actually develop an emergency ordinance to save those families from being kicked out during the holidays. And she helped us draft, and she helped us with copies of ordinance, and we were able to do that. And that was my rookie year. That was when I didn't know what, how to navigate, how to even speak at the podium. And so I acknowledged that. That was what we did. So we eliminated the deficit, we saved those thirty families, we were able to give our employees raises and help them with their pension and health benefits, and those are positive, good things. Other things is the Yosemite Avenue. The, one of the biggest criticisms that we receive constantly is that Yosemite Avenue looks terrible, and it does. It does look terrible. It's looked terrible for a long time. We have plywood on the windows in those businesses that were shut down, and the streets are not, they're not paved adequately. But people confuse the idea, thought City Hall was in charge of that, when it's actually Caltrans, a department of the state of California, that's in charge of Yosemite. But we did navigate. We did go into a partnership with Caltrans, and God willing, in 2025, construction will begin on Yosemite Avenue and to beautify Yosemite Avenue. So moving on, the casino. For years, people have been waiting for the casino to open. Good-paying jobs, more revenue coming into the city, more employment for our folks. So fighting with them, advocating for them at all levels, including in the courts, the casinos finally broke ground, and it's going to be opening soon. I don't say soon. Construction takes what it takes, but finally, thank God, the casino is going to be built. The city college has been growing tremendously during, during our tenure that we've been here, and we've been partnering with them, and we have plans for the future with Madera Community College, because you know why? Because they're our community college. That is our community college, and we will do anything in our power to help them. So we have plans. We have long-term plans with them to be able to help them so they can help us, because it makes no sense for our children to drive to Mercedes, to drive to Clovis, to drive to Ridley, to drive to Federal City College, when we have a community college right here in our own backyard. I want to think that I leave here after my six years on the city council in a better place than what it was in 2018, and that's the minimum that you can expect. Do no harm, and try to lift up your community. And I think that we've been able to do that together, and I'm not taking credit for this. I acknowledge my colleagues working together, that we are in a better place in 2024 than we were in 2018. I wish for our community to prosper. I wish my colleagues Godspeed, good luck in everything you do. I know that you have Madera in your hearts, Mayor Gallegos, and I believe that Madera is going to be in a good spot, and we are going to be moving forward. I hope to see you all soon. We will be, we will be moving on and making, continue to do everything we can to, for Madera, because my family is born and raised here. My wife is a teacher at Madera High, and I'm going to continue advocating for my community at all levels, whether it's here locally or it's going to be at Washington, D.C. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you for listening to me. God bless you, and we will see you soon.
Mayor Gallegos, if I may, you know, one of the, along the attributes that our mayor Garcia was mentioning, we have developed, and we have some developers here in our audience today, but we've had the opportunity to develop many communities, and you know, obviously, that's thanks to your developers are planning, but we also had an opportunity to annex over eighteen hundred acre, eighteen hundred acres for our village D, which will bring at some point over ten thousand units to the west side of Madera. Again, the growth patterns that we have, again, that's thanks to not only our mayor, but this council. I just want to make sure that we acknowledge and we recognize that amongst us here, we have many developers and also real estate people in the community that have made this happen for us. So thank you again. And again, Mayor Garcia, thank you for your words and wishing you well in your endeavors.
Okay, moving on, reorganization item, selecting a mayor pro temp, City Clerk Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor Gallegos. One moment while I pull up my presentation, please. Good evening, mayor and council. This evening's item for consideration is selection of mayor pro temp to serve a one-year term. The city council, at its first regular meeting in the month of December, shall choose one of its members as mayor pro temp. The selection for mayor pro temp is outlined in Resolution 12-210. Resolution 12-210 specifies that the selected council member to serve as mayor pro temp should generally not have previously held this position, except when all council members have completed a term as mayor pro temp. In this instance, where all council members have fulfilled a term as mayor pro temp, Resolution 12-210 establishes criteria for selection. The individual chosen as mayor pro temp in such circumstances would be the council member who has not served the longest period in that role. You'll see here that everyone at the dais has already served as mayor pro temp. The last serving mayor pro temp was Councilmember Gallegos, and we have Councilmember Rodriguez showing as the council member that has not served in the longest. So based on this information provided and the criteria established in the resolution, Councilmember Jose Rodriguez qualifies to serve as mayor pro temp for the upcoming term, considering that all council members have served as mayor pro temp. So for council's action this evening, staff is asking, are asking that council consider approving a minute order, accepting the nomination for mayor pro temp, and making the appointment of mayor pro temp to serve a one-year term. I will now turn it back over to you, Mayor Gallegos.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez. At this time, I'll open it for public comment. I see no public comment. I will close it and bring it back to my colleagues for a motion if Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez will accept this nomination.
I will gladly accept. I feel like a celebrity today. I've been presented with a note in office and also the mayor pro temp. So yes, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking for a motion for my colleagues?
To approve.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jose Rodriguez as mayor pro temp.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez. Let the record show that Councilman Steve Montez just arrived. Thank you for being here tonight. I do not see our elected official, Assemblywoman Soria, in the house yet.
We are, we are taking that item after the break.
Okay, so we will move on to, we invite all of you into our foyer inside City Hall for some cake and goodies, and to congratulate all your elected officials that have come into office. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. After goodies, we're coming back for some more. So if you'd like to hang out with us, you're more than welcome. Hopefully fifteen minutes. Hopefully, 15 minutes.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez. Welcome back, everyone. We're going to continue on to presentations. A placumation recognizing Assemblywoman Esmeralda Soya. Okay, everyone. Thank you for joining me tonight. If I could have the Assemblywoman with me up here? I wish everybody was still in here that left to hear this wonderful woman's accomplishments and her commitment and partnership that she has with our council. Assemblywoman Soya has been a tremendous champion for our city. Your first day on the job, I remember at her swearing in, she said, "I'm gonna get the hospital back for you, City of Madera." And she did. And let me tell you, it wasn't easy. She was up and down this valley, talking to other elected officials, trying to get money to help us keep our hospital open. We were in very disrepair and financially, I say we, like I'm part of the hospital, but I'm not, that they were such in disrepair that it was something that was going to be hard to come back from. We've never seen funding like this in the city ever, that she awarded over $20 million to, $25 million to our Madera Community Hospital. Fifty, oh, excuse me, 57, thank you. And not only our hospital, because of her advocacy in her elected position, she was able to save many more hospitals from closing like ours. So that's an important thing that this community has to understand. She's always been our spokesperson. She's been amazing. She's hit it out of the park. We were so thrilled to have her on our team. She's gotten reelected by this community with outstanding numbers. And we're honored here in the City Council to continue the relationships that we have with her. So, the City of Madera and Office of the Mayor, you're my first ones, Assemblywoman Soya. We would like to thank you for your unwavering commitment to the city and serving and serving this community. Even our food bank just received $500,000 to help them. I could go on and on, but we, you know, it's gonna be a long night because of our little break. But to tell you everything that she's done for us and other people in our district is amazing. She's done backpacks in our, in our school giveaways, Madera Unified Mad Tech Robotics. She's done community resource fairs with the community on our east side and north side. She did turkey giveaway for the county. I mean, it's, it's not all here, but I could keep going. The most important, dear to my heart, is the Town and Country Trail that we were working on, that we didn't have funding, and she's helped get that funding, that we got it engineered, and we're gonna hopefully start construction soon. And I can, there's, there's no, I could go on. Like I said, this woman is amazing. And she doesn't stop. She's working late at night, and she's doing what she needs to do. So, on behalf of C.C. Gallegos, Mayor of the City of Madera, on behalf of this entire council here, here, I do by here, recognize and extend our deepest gratitude to Assemblywoman Esmeralda Soya for her continued dedication, advocacy, and significant contributions to the City of Madera.
First and foremost, I want to say thank you, Mrs. Mayor, for this recognition and to the entire council, from former Mayor Santos Garcia, one for your partnership. I cannot do the work that I do alone, and so it really takes a team. And so I am incredibly proud of the great work that we have done for Madera. And I believe that this community, for a long time, deserved, was underserved and under-invested. And so my commitment, as the mayor mentioned, was to make sure that this community felt seen, felt heard, and not just that, but that you actually got the dollars that you deserved. And so for me, the number one thing was the hospital. I was known in Sacramento, and still to this day, I'm known as the hospital lady. Everyone knows about Madera. So Madera is no longer, you know, just a small little town in the Central Valley. People know about Madera. And the thing that they will know about Madera is that we worked really hard to make sure that this hospital will be reopening its doors in early 2025. But again, it's taken an entire team of folks, not just myself, but many of your council members that are here that also, you know, walk the halls of Sacramento, knocking on our doors and saying, "Hey, we need the help. We need the investment." And that's what we've done together. And so I'm incredibly proud to be part of Team Madera. You know, I will always have your back. I will continue to not just listen and to hear, but more importantly, to do the work to get the investments that this community so rightfully deserves. And so to two more years of, again, continuing to work hard to bring those resources and to really make policy work for our communities, because we're a little bit different. We're not San Francisco. We're not Los Angeles. We are the Central Valley. We're rural. And that's important to me, and that's important for me to make sure that my colleagues in Sacramento knows, and that Governor Newsom also understands that in the last two years that, that he has in office. But again, thank you so much for the partnership, for the commitment to continue to advocate for the most vulnerable in our, here in the City of Madera, but most importantly, in the state. And this region is really a great region, but we do need a lot of help, and so we'll continue to work. And so I want to thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you to all the council members. Congratulations to those that got reelected. Also, you know, a great farewell to a good friend who also, for the last four years, was a staunch advocate for Madera. And that really, it took an entire team, the entire council, to make sure that you guys got every single penny that this community deserves. And so I look forward to doing some amazing things over the next two years. And thank you so much for your partnership and for the friendship. And I want to thank the voters of Madera County, because we won Madera County in this election cycle. So thank you so much for the honor. And, you know, let's get to work, because there's a lot of work to be done. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm gonna take just two more minutes of your time. Obviously, I couldn't come empty-handed. And so similarly, as I take, I just took reign of this new legislative year, I also wanted to extend my congratulations to, one, the council members that got reelected. And so I wanted to extend my congratulations and present some certificates of recognition to City Councilwoman Anita Evans. Also, congratulations to Councilmember Artemio Villegas. Then I'll call also Councilmember José Rodríguez.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Anita.
Thank you. And then last but not least, to Ms. Mayor C.C. Gallegos. So we got a lot of work to do, so look forward to doing that. Thank you.
With that, I'm going to continue our agenda with public comment. The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdictions of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked, but are not required, to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option to ask a speaker to hold their comments until the item is called. Comments on this item listed as public hearing and agenda should be held until the hearing is open. The council is prohibited by law from taking any actions on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Is there any public comment in the audience tonight?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Bobby Kahn, observing currently as your interim executive director for the Madera County Economic Development Commission, but is coming to an end very shortly. As I'd like to introduce this evening, the new executive director for Madera County Economic Development Commission, Christina Gallagher. And she was going to do an outstanding job, and I know you all enjoy working with her. So I'm just going to let her have the rest of the time to introduce herself. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I just wanted to have this opportunity to introduce myself. I'm Christina Gallagher. I'm the new executive director of the Madera County EDC. I really look forward to working with you all. I know I met some of you already. Just a little bit about myself. I come from the California State Association of Counties up in Sacramento, where I worked on housing, land use, and transportation issues. And then before that, I worked at a contract lobbying firm, where we represented really big businesses and other local governments. So just really excited to bring that experience here. You know, I left a stack of cards for you guys, so feel free to reach out to me at any time. I also left a real estate update that we, our office recently did. So if you have any questions about that, please reach out to me. Again, I look, I look forward to working with all of you, and please reach out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. It's a pleasure to have you here at the City Council. Any other public comment online, City Clerk Gonzalez, or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, I close public comment and go to the consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent calendar as it will be considered separately. Do my colleagues have any items to pull? I see none. I open it up for public comment. City Clerk, anything online?
We have none, Mayor.
Or on Zoom? Okay. With that, I close public comment. I bring it back to my colleagues for a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to no workshops, we have D petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinance, and agreements. We have D 1 to 2024 wastewater treatment plant improvement project 24-01. Ms. Bitter, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Gallegos and council members. My name is Ellen Bitter. I'm deputy city engineer, and I will now turn, start the presentation. That work? There we are. It's great. Yeah, okay. All right. Little glitch. Little glitch, we're rolling again. Tonight, we're here for the contract award for the 2024 wastewater treatment plant improvements project, project number WWTP 2401. This project is to provide much needed improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. They have been, it's a compilation of several evaluations and studies that identified needed projects due to deterioration and age of the equipment and being able to continue to meet the needs going forward. Briefly, they are a new bar screen facility that is where the sewer or the influent comes into the facility from our Avenue 13 interceptor sewer. It'll go into this new bar screen facility. It includes a new septic receiving station, so we do provide services to all the septic haulers and right now they're actually having to just to discharge their collections in the same manhole that we use right at the wet well. So this provides a proper location for them and also to log who is using our wastewater treatment plant as well. And we will be cleaning and recoding the three digesters. These were initially scoped out for a project in 2018 and there was not enough funds, so with the ARPA funds that are now available, we were able to include that with this project. And then during this project, the contractor is to inspect the wet well, which is where the pumps are, the first set of pumps for our lift station. It's the original concrete vault area and it's been a while since it's been inspected and so we want to, we'll have to bypass the effluent coming in so we can inspect it and determine if any additional repairs or improvements are needed there. I do want to make a clarification. I caught in the staff report that the engineer that designed the plans and specs and put it out to bid was StanTech Consulting, so it was misstated in the report. And also, this project is considered categorically exempt because it's replacement or reconstruction of existing facilities, there's no expansion and or change in use. This is a bird's eye view of the treatment plant. I think most of, most everyone has toured out there. On the right side of your screen, just to orient you, is Road 21 and a half, you can see the circle driveway there and that gets you to the main entry building. The red rectangle up on top is where the new bar screen facility is going to be. It's a brand new structure and, and also where that number three is, is where the septic haulers will be able to dump their material. You can see there's a circle road to go in, so it's going to keep them completely out of our treatment plant facilities. And the second rectangle is the three digesters that are to be cleaned and recoded. So we prepared, StanTech prepared the plans. It was an accelerated process because we had the deadline of spending the ARPA funds of December of 2024, so they were awarded their engineering contract early in the spring and we had this out to bid in October of 2024. It was placed on our bidding portal, Planet Bids, and also advertised in the Madera Tribune two times. We received four bids and on this slide, the low bidder was Gateway Pacific Contractors and then second was WM Lyles, third, number three is Clark Brothers and number four is Western Water. The engineers estimate for the project was nine million 100,000 and that was for the complete scope that I stated earlier. There were deducts, to deduct the cleaning and the coating of the digesters, but because the lowest bid of eight million 738,000 was lower than the engineers estimate, we were able to award the full project or recommend awarding the full project. So as part of the bid review, we check for any irregularities in the pricing structure, any evidence of collusion between bidders or indication of a misunderstanding of the work, so that could result in a price that is too high or too low. So that means they didn't understand the scope. Bids are evaluated to determine if they are responsive and if the bidder is responsible, two, two separate findings. A responsive bid meets all the requirements of the bid submission. A responsible bidder is one who is able to satisfactorily perform the work and items considered include their qualifications, experience, reputation, capacity and financial resources. The bidders and their subcontractors are checked to make sure they are currently registered with the Department of Industrial Relations or the DIR. And on this particular project, the bidders were also required to provide certifications of experience and qualifications, including, there was a long checklist of essential requirements. They needed to provide their company experience and list previous projects completed of similar scope and size. Their project managers also had to state their experience and similar projects that they've worked on. And in addition to that, there is a section for safety qualifications and there any accident, there's an accident rate that's calculated based on any incidents and they were required to provide that as well. This, we performed our, our standard bid review and then our consultant StanTech, they performed a detailed review for the low bidder of the project's specific requirements. They checked the references and confirmed the project experience and of note, of the three safety matrices that they are required to provide, they were below industry standards, which is, it's good, right? Their rate was less than the industry standards and including their three-year average. Based on the detailed review of these bid documents, Gateway Pacific Contractors submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bid. On this particular award, I provided some more detail. The city did receive a letter from, with some questions regarding the finding of this low bidder being responsible. With our due diligence on the review and the, the finding by our StanTech consultant, we are comfortable in moving forward with the recommendation for that award. So our recommendation is to award the contract to Gateway Pacific. We also recommend an allowance of 15% of the contract amount for any contingencies resulting from unknown conditions. The majority, the majority of the project funds are the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funds, and there is a requirement that these funds have to be encumbered before December 31. And the process of encumbering the funds is awarding the contract, getting the contract signed, getting the insurance and the bonds in place, then a purchase order can be issued and that officially encumbers the fund. So there's some time still required, so that's also the urgency in, in needing to keep this on this agenda if we can. And the balance of the project is funded with the sewer capital enterprise funds. Total project budget for the contract and the allowances of the 15% for contingencies and a budget for construction, engineering and inspection and testing, recommended total budget is 10 million 378,924 and approximately 6 million of that is the ARPA funds and then the balance is from the sewer enterprise funds of 4.3 million. So with that, we recommend adopting the resolution approving the contract award for the 2024 wastewater improvements project WWTP 2401 for 8 million 738,195 to Gateway Pacific Contractors, Inc. and authorizing a contingency of 15% of the contract amount. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Deputy Engineer Bitter. Do my colleagues have any questions? Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gallegos. And I know we received the late distribution yesterday, so the, the bid amount that we're authorizing today of 8 million 738,000, does the 15, is the 15% contingency built in or is that what we're requesting aside?
The 15% is in addition to the 8 million, so it, the budget is 8 million plus the 15% contingency.
Okay. Now, a question for you, and I know that this happens often, I'm assuming with projects of this size, is that we'll come back and get a change order. Now, based on what that bid is or that contract for that, for those services, in what case can we see a change order outside of the, the amount that we're going to award?
So one of our biggest unknowns is the wet well, where the first pumps are, the influent lift station. Once we get in there and do that investigation, if it's determined that the condition requires either immediate, almost emergency repairs or is such that it makes sense to move forward with any work at this time under this contract, they potentially could exceed that 15% and we would come to the council for that change order. That would be an example. Other, I'm not sure what other unknowns we might find at this point, but that's the biggest unknown we have.
So, and I mean, and I, you probably covered this here, but in order for us to make sure we cover that, I mean, we're saying it's, we're awarding the 8 million, 8.7 million, but we have it in our, in this, in this proposal and then we, we've allocated the contingency aside as well because that's what we're approving today, right? So if it goes beyond that amount, then we have 1.3 million that potentially can come back and change orders.
Yes, that, so that would cover those, any additions to the contract.
So then we'd be looking at closer to 10 million, pretty much, if not more.
For the entire project budget, that's correct.
Got it. And that's, that's common for all other bidders as well. We would add that 15% for all of the bidders on that same request, right?
Yes, sometimes our contingencies vary depending upon the nature of the work. When we are doing underground work, there's a lot more unknowns, we generally request a higher contingency. 10% is typical on our Avenue 13 project because we didn't know what we were going to encounter. That was a 20% contingency, so the, in consultation with our consultants, they thought 15% would be adequate for this project.
Okay. So this will be my last comment that I make, so when we're presenting these amounts, I mean, for me, I'm just looking at 8.7. Obviously you said a 15% contingency, so should we, and we're approving it, but the numbers are not there. So I mean, should it be more of a $10 million award that we're looking at just to make sure that we, we have those funds set aside to make sure that that project gets done regardless of the change orders?
We, so the contract with the recommended contractor is for 8.3 million. When we do a purchase order and encumber the funds, we encumber the contingency amount as well, but, but the contractor doesn't get those, only through a change order would those funds be issued to the contractor. So we do encumber those at the beginning.
And it'll come back here for an approval.
If, if it exceeds the 10%, the 15%, then we would come back to council and ask for additional contingencies, potentially a budget amendment if that was needed.
Thank you for your thorough explanation. Appreciate the presentation. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez. Councilmember Montez.
Thank you Ellen for the report and thank you for StanTech for, this is a project that was kind of initiated in February, right? So it's been, it's been a while. And so you did mention that there were some concerns that were brought up and you did a little bit more due diligence. You're still recommending, even though you had those concerns, you've basically laid those concerns saying, hey, you know, the concerns are either something that we can overcome or foundered or whatever, and you're still recommending that we move forward with this. Is that something you can elaborate a little more on the look over at our attorney to the degree that you can or, you know, say, hey, you know, we've, we've addressed those concerns and we're comfortable moving forward?
If you don't mind, Ms. Bitter.
Sorry.
No worries. Thank you, council member. As Ms. Bitter mentioned, we had received at kind of at the 11th hour, a letter from the carpenters local union 701. They raised two basic items. They thought that the bid was too low and that there was speculation that they wouldn't be able to pay prevailing wage. We've had StanTech take a look at it, who's the city's consultant, who's done the due diligence as part of this, and there is no evidence there that they would not be able to pay prevailing wage. The other assertion is, is that the lowest bidder is not a quote responsible bidder. As part of this, they did raise some items that occurred almost two decades ago with regards to OSHA violations. Again, staff has done their due diligence, has gone out and confirmed that they are currently registered with the Department of Industrial Relationships and in fact, they currently have a much safer safety record than the typical business that goes out there. So with that, I hope that answers your question. I would also note that because both of these were kind of received at the last moment, haven't been distributed out, but they will be put in the record with the city clerk, both the, the carpenters, a letter as well as StanTech's email response so that that information is in the record. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I do understand that we received that after the staff report was out, so I do appreciate it and I always have to ask those questions and look at the attorney and say, hey, you know, what, you know, what should we say or do? But I appreciate you guys doing your due diligence and I think that does allay the concerns that we had and, you know, comfortable moving forward. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Montez. Just one comment, Deputy Engineer Bitter, if we were not to approve it today, we would lose our funding because this is ARPA funding that has to be spent by December 31st, correct?
That would be at risk. We would be moving mountains, I think, to, if we brought it back on the 18th, I think we'd be moving mountains to try and encumber that by the 31st.
Right, because we're already making, keeping it tight for you in three weeks to try to get all this moved and put forth. I thank you for your hard work. I open it up for public comment. Any public comment? Hey, I see none. Any online city clerk Gonzalez?
We have none, mayor.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion from my colleagues.
I move to make a motion for this, present this presentation in favor of?
Approve item D.
Approve it? Yes.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your presentation. Moving on to administrative reports, E1, City Council Discussion of Options Regarding the Process Filling of a Potential Vacancy on City Council District 1.
Thank you very much, City Council. As you know, I'm the city attorney, Shannon Chaffin. I typically don't give staff reports, but for certain particular items I do. I'd like to say I may have lost a, you know, rock, paper, scissors competition with Arnaldo, but you are stuck with me this evening and I'll briefly go through this. We have a vacancy, as you can see, in, in a particular seat here for, for District 1. And the reason is, is if a sitting council member is elected to another council seat, as we have here where Ms. Gallegos is now the mayor, she, her seat now becomes vacant. And I know the council's familiar with this, so this is more for the benefit of the public, but one council member can't sit in two seats. That's just, just the way it is. So there needs to be a vacancy that's filled and there's two basic ways for doing that. One is by appointment and that appointment is made by the city council. The other option is holding a special election, which is subject to a variety of requirements and rules. So city council does not have a lot of time to make this decision. Under state law, city council only has 60 days, that is until Sunday, February 2nd, 2025, to make this decision and to complete it, whatever that decision may be. So as a practical matter, you've got, looking at the calendar, two regular meetings left. That's the December 18th meeting and the January 15th meeting. In theory, you could call a lot of special elections. Personally, I don't think that any of us would want to be here on a Sunday, February 2nd, trying to get the last of this done, but two meetings for the benefit of the public is where we're at, so time is short. So let's talk about option one. Well, that is the appointment of the city council were to appoint. So who can they appoint? Well, it has to be a registered voter of the city. They have to meet the basic age requirements. They have to be a legal resident or their domicile within District 1 and they have to be the willingness to be appointed. Unfortunately, you just can't force people to sit in that council seat, so. So there are a couple ways for the appointment process. Basically two of them and a bunch of different hybrids. I just want to hit the big two. And one is where the, the council would establish an application period for appointment hopefuls in District 1, they'd submit an official application to the city clerk. And then what the council would do is they'd go through these, any applicants that came in, debate them, any interviews would have to be done publicly due to the Brown Act and then there would be a debate among the council publicly as to which candidate that they wanted. And staff in order to do this would also need information from the city council. So, and that information is, well, how much notice do you want? Who, who do you want noticed? Do you want it by word of mouth? Do you want it in the newspaper? Do you want it on a line? Do you want it on Facebook? What, what do you want in the application besides a typical name? Hey, I live in here and here's the basic requirements for being in the district. When do you want this deadline in? We only have two meetings. So what amount of time? And if you're going to be in the newspaper and you're going to be able to make the meetings, that means that we would have to submit for the 18th, for example. Our next deadline to submit our agenda stuff, I believe, is in just over a week and you usually have to have a lead time for a newspaper, so we'd already have to be So we'd already have to be given notice yesterday and already hit the 18th, basically. So what sort of deadlines do you want for distributions as to when the city council would be receiving that information? So the council would be able to review these and make an informed decision. And of course, the interviews are through an open process. So that is one appointment option. The other appointment option is what's called the direct appointment option. And that is the city council, at any time within the 60-day period, by a majority vote of at least four council members, has the authority to directly appoint a qualified individuals to a vacancy. You don't need to do an application process. And for the public's benefit, this is not uncommon at all. This may surprise some of you, but the city council actually knows a lot of people around the various cities and usually the reputations or have people recommend, recommended to them and who are usually active in the political arena and in the community. So it's not uncommon and it is done on a fairly regular basis. So those are the two approaches. Now, the council could come up with a hybrid approach. You could do both, you could do neither, you can change at any time. Usually it's helpful to staff to pick one, let staff know which direction you want to do, and then staff will run out and make sure that it's done for you to that extent. So that's the appointment options. So let's talk about the special election options. Because I've found that in a lot of places, we think as Americans, we want everybody to be elected. Well, the state legislature has recognized that this is not an easy process. And the state legislature has set up some very complicated rules for elections. In fact, they actually have their own elections code. That's how complicated it is to get people elected. The state is highly technical. So you can fill your vacancy by holding an election. The cost of the election, we reached out to the county and said, how much is this likely to cost? And they said, well, it's going to probably cost about $35,000 to $40,000 out of the city's funds. And under state law, the earliest the election may occur legally is about a year from now. So that seat will be empty for about a year. And after the election, the person receiving the most votes would reserve the remaining portion of now mayor Gallegos's term, which would be about 12 months. So you're in essence spending about $35,000 to $45,000 waiting almost a year without a person there and then having them there for about 12 months of active service. So some councils like to do that, some don't. They'd rather go through the appointment process and, and save the money. But what staff is looking at for you today, we do not have a recommendation. We are all ears as to what direction you want to go. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
I appreciate that report. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues if they have any questions or comments. Councilmember Montez.
So, thank you, Shannon. So for the notification process on, I guess would be the option one, and that is at our discretion.
Yes, you are not legally required to give notice.
So we could say this public meeting is enough notice and say, because I'm just going to put it out there. I'm kind of in favor of a hybrid, maybe. And I guess it, we have to see how this plays out today, but if there are any nominations today, and then in our next council meeting, we kind of hold the open session interviews. So that way, the public has some involvement. But if we don't have any notification requirement, legal requirements, that would be my, my thoughts on how we can proceed unless today, if we can come up with a nomination and a consensus, then that could be it. Then we can do that on this agenda side, correct?
Yes, city council can appoint someone in five minutes from now.
That would be something to see, but.
Hope springs eternal, right?
She was always that easy. Yeah, those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Montez. Councilwoman Evans.
Yes, I too am in favor of the nominations and let's see who we have and let's take it from there.
Okay, any other comments from my colleagues? I will, at this time, open it up to Palm look, oh, Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor Gallegos. So I am of the firm belief that our residents elect us to represent them, but not to make decisions over somebody else representing them. So I would be in favor of having a period to where it's, there's notice to the community that there's this vacancy and allowing anybody that's interested in representing District One, apply and then coming back and having these interviews during that, during that 60-day period.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mejia. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you.
May I approach him, excuse me?
Thank you, Mayor Gallegos. I think that'll take some time for us to get used to that, too. So, well, I mean, I know this happened, this exact same thing happened back when we had the prior mayor exit and we had a council member do the same. I think we went through a very contentious battle. We, we had to go through a special election and it did cost the city some money, again, for that short stint. And then having to go back within six months and have to reapply for the whole thing. I know it's costly, but again, that's the process that we chose to do. We had that option. You know, I'm, I'm always in favor of what's in the best interest of the city. Obviously, trying to save taxpayer dollars, but we also need to be transparent. I think this item has been posted on the agenda within given time. And I like the idea of possibly having nominations, maybe having them come back and see if we can probably get something done. If we can get something done tonight, that'd be great because that settles it and we all have a good Christmas. But if not, then we can certainly bring it back and, and hopefully get to hear from, from the nominee, nominees and maybe candidates and, and we hope to hopefully make a decision. Now, if that doesn't happen, obviously, you know, then there's the, the, the alternative and the last resort, which is the special election, of which I'm not a big fan of. Because I think we, as representatives of the, of the people, I think they want us to make that decision. They want us to bring forward an appointee that can serve the remainder of the term to be able to get this council moving forward. If you recall, this body had some, some trouble trying to get through a majority for some time on certain very important key business decisions that we had to make for the city. And again, that, we couldn't do that because we were under gridlock. And, and it's unfortunate, but it costs the taxpayers money and, and it's, it's not good for city business. So I, I hope that we can walk away and we can come together to, to fill in the position as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez. Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, mayor. So as a resident of District Five, whose district was, unfortunately, the seat was vacant for a whole year and there was silence in that seat for a whole year. I definitely would not be in favor of a special election in addition to the cost. We all know that when we don't have a voice here speaking for us, where it's, government is slow and it gets even slower. So that's why I would not be in favor of that. But I feel like it is our duty to bring this back to our, all of our residents because the process, if you're not intimately familiar with it, you really haven't received enough notice. It really hasn't been, all of that information hasn't really been clear and out there. And I just feel like we owe it to all of Madera residents and especially District, the district that's District One, to get, let them be a part of that process, let them engage, give ample notice. And I trust in our community that they are going to engage and that we would have sufficient time within 60 days to bring this back and like, and be, have everyone engaged as part of this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mejia. So what I'm hearing from my colleagues is, and I agree on taking it to an application period, but then I'm hearing nominations and then an application process and maybe an interview. Two different things that I'm hearing from different council members. So if there's no more comments, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Anybody in the audience have a comment?
It's just an opinion. I don't live in the city, I live in the county, but anything that the city does affect my family. And you know, in the near future, we're planning to move to the city. And I've been probably the only one that been here in the meetings probably for the last six, eight years, more than anybody else, my wife and I. And, and we learn a lot. And we went through this process when, when the councilwoman was elected. But it's just my advice, you know? I do believe honestly that people wants to see fiscal responsibility from the people that are elected and serve us. And I don't think, and it's just my opinion again, that for one year that this person is going to serve, it warrants to be an election that is going to cost $40,000 to the city of Madera. I think it's just a waste of money, a waste of resources. And I trust the good judgment of the council that they will elect themselves the right person. I, and, and again, just throwing money away. I think the people that elect you is hoping that you save as much money and invested in something that will benefit the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montez. Any other comments, public comment? I don't see any. I will close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues. I do have a comment and I will start it off that I think some of us here have some, a lot of residents that we think that will do a great job in District One. I think that nominations would be a good start for this elected body and then bring in interviews. If there, most of my colleagues here want to do an open process, I'm good with that, too. I do think it's important to remember that I did have a fellow council member say, when he was thinking about running for mayor, please give me the respect if you know of somebody that wants to take my seat. And I did do that. We had, I had conversations with somebody who wanted to run in that seat and I gave him her name and said, contact her, there you go. If you need anything else, let me know because that's his district. He serves that, that community. So that respect on this dais, I think, is very important. And I respect all my colleagues here to make this decision that's best for District One. And as you know, it's the most vocal. They're here, they're texting, they're calling and they have a lot of concerns. Their voices are heard. And not that the other districts are because Montez has district and they, and Elsa, and they tell them, oh, no, Councilwoman Gallegos is my elected official, I'm calling her. And Montez is going like, right, go ahead, go ahead, call her. So we all serve, we all will do our job. But what I'm concerned about is on whoever we do choose is that we have noticed in our, in our families and in our workforce, that a lot of people are not present there. They're on their phones, they're on social media, they're in their own little worlds. And we really need somebody in District One that's going to be present and it's going to be out there in the community and it's going to be able to talk to them and engage. And it's, because they're going to get the most phone calls, they're going to get the most texts and emails and knocking on the door, which I get. And so it's, it's not an easy position to fill. I, I'm elated to see that I see many candidates here in the audience that would take a nomination tonight. Thank you for being a part of this and reaching out and, and putting your foot on, forward, because it's, it's not easy to do this and stand up here and, and, you know, plead your heart out about wanting to be a servant and serve the public. It's hard. So those are my comments. I just would like to get more information from my colleagues on how they feel they want to move forward. I would think nominations would be good and then we go into an interview process. That would be my comments. Anyone else would like to comment? Councilmember Montez.
Question for clarification. So hearing Councilmember Mejia's concern about 60 days, we have enough time for the 60 days? That we'd be basically under the gun at that last, the, the only meeting in January to make that decision?
That is correct. So if you did nominations tonight, for example, and then did it at your December 18th meeting or your January meeting, you would have both of those dates available for you. So it is a legal option for the benefit of the public for the council to predict, you know, nominate. Well, they only nominate one, that's pretty clear. But nominate, you know, two or three or four individuals as their nomination pool. And then they could come back and discuss that at the next meeting or even the January meeting and then make the decision at that point. And if no resolution can be made at that point, you can always hold a special meeting and then call a special election so that the seat at least is filled for 12 months period of time.
Thank you, Councilman Montez. Councilwoman Evans.
Yes, I'd like to have the recommendations and come back in the 60 days and allow whoever it is that wants to participate and to run for the seat, for this empty seat that sits right next to me now, I'm over here by myself. But yes, I'm sorry. But anyway, yes, I would like to have that done. So anyone that is wanting to participate and to run, let's hear from them tonight, if possible, or we'll just take their names and then come back in the 60 days and.
Next meeting.
No, the next, the 18th, the 18th. Forgive me. Yeah, the 8th. Heck no.
We have to be done in 60 days.
Yeah, we have to be done by February the 2nd. So yes, let's rock and roll.
Thank you, Councilwoman Evans. Mayor Proton Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gallegos. So if I'm hearing my colleagues correctly is that we take nominations today. If, if, if I get more nods, then we can assume that we can have that nomination done today. I'm ready to make a nomination so that we can get the ball rolling. I'd like to consider that whomever is also going to nominate, that we do that tonight. And then we can get this ball rolling. 60 days goes in a heartbeat. And before you know it, we're stuck again in some type of gridlock, now contemplating about possibly going through a special election. This would allow us ample time to have the nominees come back, present them, present themselves, why they qualify. And at that moment, I think this council, I'm pretty confident that we can come up with an appointee to fill that vacancy and move on and do the business that we do for the city. With that, I'd like to nominate Mr. Rohi Sakaria, if he'd be willing to accept the nomination.
I'd like to second that one.
So through the mayor, you can do this one of two ways. You can either just do it on two people nominating, just a first and a second, and then they're put into the hopper, for the lack of a better word, of potential candidates. Or you can hold a straw vote as to whether or not they have a majority vote at this time for appointment. So they could be appointed outright. It's up to you. Typically, city councils will nominate one, two, three, four people and then they'll decide whether to hold a straw vote tonight or whether to bump it to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. And then at this point, I would like to nominate, I've been very public about it when I ran for supervisor District Three. I have told everyone who's been on my team, he is present in all the things that we do as council members. You would have thought he was a council member already. He is a hardworking individual who has really increased our ability to hire our young people in Matilda Torres South and Madera High. He is a work experience coordinator for Madera Unified and he works with all our businesses in the city of Madera and in the county. He is one that has something that we do not have on this council is a dear heart to special need children and adults. And I think that is something, I've gotten a lot of people in my district concerned about that. I've several of them probably in the last two weeks. And I just see this person as present. He is accessible, he will be there for this community, he will work hard. He will do his duty to study the council reports. He will make his own decisions. It won't be what I want, what our other council members want. He will listen to District One, but he knows that he represents the city of Madera. And I think that's the most important aspect right there, is that you do, are voted by District One, but you do what's best for this community. And at this time, I would like to appoint Tim Rocher.
Now, second that.
Thank you.
And through the mayor, just if I could confirm with Mr. Rocher that he accepts a nomination. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, mayor. So I, I have two clarifying questions. The first is, when would the nomination period end? Oh, okay. She's answering my question, but, okay. And so is there going to be further public outreach? And so is there going to be further public outreach as far as nominations? Is the public allowed to nominate?
It's up to you. Currently, the process that the council appears to be going down is the hopper method. And that is you put nominees into a hopper and then you give them a chance to submit their applications, make their presentations, be interviewed at the December 18th meeting. In theory, the city council could reopen that at any time and go with a different method or put somebody else into the hopper and then go to the January meeting so that you can interview them. So it does keep your options open. You're not locked in tonight if you decide to go initially with the hopper method and then add somebody at a later time.
Okay, so so far, the nomination period ends on December 18th, right?
It can end whenever the city council says it's end. Up to February 2nd.
Okay, thank you.
But right now, it looks like the council's doing nominations tonight. And then they can reopen nominations at the next meeting if they want to. Again, council has made a final decision. I'm just kind of counting noses here.
So with that, I motion.
Sorry. And then about the further public outreach? Or is this the only notice during this meeting?
Whatever the council would like us to do. So for example, if the council is using the hopper meeting tonight, yet would like us to post something on the city's website or page saying, hey, you know, these people have been nominated. If you're interested, please submit an application or at least show up at the city, at the city council meeting and present yourself or reach out to your, well, they couldn't reach out to their council person at this particular point. But, you know, they, they can put their, they can throw their hat in the ring in a variety of sort of ways. So you can either make it a general notification or you can make it a specific notification, which is an application form. We send it out to the newspapers. But unfortunately, due to publication dates and timelines, if you want to put it in the newspaper, we would not be able to make the December 18th meeting, which would mean it'd be delayed for almost another month until the end of January.
Okay, thank you. I would like to request for notice through the website and social media, the digital channels that the city of Madera has available.
And Mayor, are you fine with a thumbs up on this when doing a thumbs up, thumbs down?
I would give a motion.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll give Councilmember Mayor Potem Rodriguez a minute.
Thank you, Mayor Gago. So just clarifying question. So my understanding was that this body has a discretion to accept nominations or not accept nominations?
That's correct.
So we want to open this up for more nominations, is what I'm hearing? Or did we submit two nominations? And are we clear there? Or do we need more nominations? I just wasn't clear. I think there's a, it seems like a direction that we have some nominees. Is there any other potential nominees or?
Councilwoman Evans?
I nominate that we close this where we are right now.
So that would be a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to close it now.
Close nominations, okay, thank you. To be clear for the city council, what this means is, is you, it would take city council approval to reopen nominations. So you're not locked in, but the two people you have are in the hopper. And right now, the hopper lid is closed until it's reopened by the city council.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
That's my nomination.
Okay, I'd just like to say that it's clear we're all confused here, too. So I can just imagine the residents. That's what I meant with my statement earlier.
City Attorney, can we open it for public comment?
Yes, if you'd like, you can reopen for public comment. And then it's up to the chair if you want to do that.
Okay.
And then if you
I'd like to open it to public comment.
Then you can come right on up.
Sorry, but a lot of other things came up and gave me too much time to think. So I'm Debbie Bryant. I am a citizen of District One. And I appreciate and respect all the council's decisions. However, I'm sitting back there thinking, as a voter in District One, is there any opportunity without delaying it? And believe me, I'd be the first one to be against a special election. It's too much money. But is there a process in which there can be representation from District One as a part of the selection? And appointed citizens? And I know we're dealing with a short amount of time and I don't want to see this prolonged. But I'm sitting back there thinking, wait a minute. Where's my vote?
That's all. That was my question for the city attorney.
And Mayor, with your permission?
Yes, go ahead. City Attorney?
Thank you so much for your comment. The answer is yes, kind of. And let me, let me explain this because there's a lot of nuances on this. Only the city council members can make appointments. You can't delegate that power away to some other person or some other group. However, they can establish groups to make recommendations to the city council, which may be accepted or rejected. I've seen it tried in the past. I'm just talking practicalities here, not legally. I've seen it tried in the past and it is extremely difficult to get a group of people together over the holidays and Christmas from a particular district, have them vet people or think about people, and then turn around and make a recommendation quickly enough within the 60 days' time in order to give the city council adequate time to make a decision. Now, it could be that we, all the stars align and everything is great in this particular time. They're but great thought. But I will, I would tell the city council it's a very difficult challenge to do that.
Thank you. With that, we have one more public comment before I close it.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for opening it back up. I had a question after everything was said and done. I think that I think that it makes sense just for transparency purposes to have an open period, even if it's short. It's only like it could be potentially like before the next meeting or something like that. For transparency purposes, for whatever it's worth, like Councilwoman Mejia shared, it's not an easy process for the community to understand. And so my concern would be that it could be interpreted like, and I don't want anyone to get offended, but it could be interpreted as, it's like the good, good, good club. I forgot what the, how the saying goes. Who you know, you got appointed, you got, you knew some people, you rubbed elbows, whatever it may be. For whatever it's worth, for transparency purposes, that's my concern as a community member. So I would request that the council would really consider not just going by appoint whoever you're appointing tonight or whoever you're suggesting tonight, but leaving a little period of open. Like Councilwoman Mejia shared, social media. I'm sure there's a lot of people out there who are interested. I mean, we've seen a lot of, and I don't know, might too many interrupt. But anyways, I was just going to share real quick. There's a lot of, and since I want to say since 2016, we've seen a lot of more civic engagement in the community. And I would like to think that this, this process is something that we can all learn from moving forward. Keeping in mind, how did it work when the seat for Councilwoman Mejia, how did that work? More people can understand the whole process. So that's just my only suggestion. Please consider having an open period, not just going by tonight, whoever was suggested. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'll close public comment at this time. And I will make a motion and thank the two nominees to bring back on the 18th for an interview.
I'll second the motion.
Through the mayor, just so I understand. So the motion is you have two nominees in the hopper. The nominations will be closed. The council is moving to bring them back on the 18th, but it is reserving its inherent authority to consider other people if a majority of the council are so inclined.
Correct.
Okay.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And then I will question for Mayor Potem Rodriguez.
Yeah, I think our legal counsel had addressed it that in any case that this comes back where a decision isn't made, we can reopen it again through a council decision. At that point, we would entertain, to Councilwoman Mejia's point, maybe allow for a period of people to come in and bring their, their resumes or qualifications to reopen. We're hoping that it doesn't go that far. But again, if memory serves me right and history plays back, things can happen. This is, like, as you mentioned, we all know people in the community. We all believe that every one of those individuals is the ideal candidate. We hope that whomever sits on that seat certainly has that neutrality and brings balance to this, to this council. I think for me, as a District Two member, regardless of what district is out for appointment, I truly care about the person that comes in with that neutral state of bringing the, the qualifications to be able to balance our council. And that's, that's at my, at forefront for me is that, you know, we have whomever, whomever we appoint brings that balance to that. And again, neutrality.
Thank you, Council, Mayor Potem Rodriguez. Councilwoman Mejia?
Thank you, Mayor. So to the point made earlier that only council members can make that appointment, yes, that is correct. But we do have the ability to listen, to hear from the residents, especially District One residents, who, while it may not be their decision, we, we can listen to them. And we have that ability right now. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you for speaking up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mejia. With that, moving on to future agenda items. Do any of my
Through the mayor, I'm so sorry. Do you mind if I jump in? I just need a little bit of clarification, I think, from staff's perspective. So do you want us to post on our website?
No.
Okay.
The motion and the second was the two appointees will come back for interviews on the 18th.
Okay. And did you want them to submit any paperwork, like qualifications or write-up? They don't have to. Anything they submit will be a public record.
Councilmember Montez?
Yeah, I just wanted to, so at the next meeting, unless, can people have the opportunity to provide public comment? And the council at that time could basically do, say whatever they want, but whatever the council directs, right? So if people do come or they have concerns or if they want to support a particular candidate that has been nominated today or somebody that hasn't been nominated. But we'll have all that. Will that be an interview process? Are we going to make them do a talent portion? I mean, I'm just, I'm curious, you know? I want to make it interesting and get people to come.
It's up to the city council. But it would be probably nice to the candidates to know if they're expected to make some sort of presentation or to submit anything, which is the reason why I'm asking.
Well, and I think it's good, not even just to the people that are nominated, because if anybody else is considering throwing their name in their, in the hat and then they have to sing a song, they may reconsider. I'm just kidding. We're not going to do that.
We will not be having a challenge.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, and, you know, I, I think for the purpose of us as a body to really get to know the candidates, I think it'd be important. I mean, the expectations that are laid out today and say, hey, what are your qualifications? How, how do I, as a District Two council member, what do I know about you? So bring it to me. Let me see it because that helps us make a final decision and hopefully an appointment to be able to see. Because I, I feel, and I mean, I know both of them. I feel they're very qualified. Okay, so I think for us to make that decision, it would help those that don't know them to have some, some, some accolades or some type of qualifications that certainly put them in that better qualification.
Thank you. And through the mayor, just as a point of clarification, oh, I hope I didn't forget my question. Bootstrapping off of your statements about, oh, just for the public's benefit, it is entirely appropriate for candidates to meet individually with city council members to explain their background and to help them understand the qualifications that are being brought. And that's part of a good government process. It's part of efficiency also with regards to meetings. City council, of course, can ask for the same thing in open session as well. But there, if there are people who don't know the candidates, I just want to let the public know. It's entirely appropriate to meet with the council members. Just don't meet with the majority of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Would my colleagues entertain a resume to be submitted to our city clerk to be part of our packet on the 12th, which is a little over a week?
Should we still have the application that Councilmember Mejia filled out?
Oh, yeah.
I believe the city clerk has that.
We have an application from when Councilwoman Mejia had to apply. Do, are we thumbs up that everybody wants to
Haven't filled out the application?
Use that application that we used two years ago? Okay?
And Mayor, I, I need clarification. So we're putting this resume out there, but we're not putting the notification that they can still apply?
No, it's just the two candidates.
Oh, so it's only being provided to the two nominees today? Okay, and then the nominee, the nomination period ends on the 18th?
No, today.
Today?
We already approved it.
Okay.
So could we, could we put that application on the website in the event that somebody is interested? They may take it upon themselves, no?
No, it's already been closed and approved. So we had enough thumbs up, direction on the application that Councilwoman Mejia used. And, and it would be returned by, I would say, the 11th so that it can go into the packet on the 12th, correct?
On this December 10th?
The 11th, so you can get it in the packet on the 12th.
So one week?
Less than a week, a week today.
Ready. So I think I'm seeing thumbs up on that?
Yes, there was five, six, sorry, six.
Already, can I please relinquish this spot? It makes me much more comfortable to be over there.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor. And definitely not to belabor the issue. Where we're going back to something that Councilmember Montez had indicated earlier. Would it be appropriate for council to describe what the applicants can expect when they arrive on the 18th? For example, are they expected to provide a five-minute overview? Are they expected to provide a PowerPoint of their accomplishments about how they envision District One? I think that it would be beneficial to both this council, the two candidates and the community.[1574.26] If council were to simply provide, it doesn't necessarily have to be in-depth, but I think some level of expectation, I think that that's only fair to the two applicants.
Okay, Councilman Montez.
Oh, I think, my opinion would be a completed application, right, by the deadline set forth, and then be prepared to answer questions, and they will be in open session. They don't necessarily have to be published, because we ask them, but from my recollection, the last time we made the applicants come up here, and we just kind of grilled them a little bit. And we also had their application, which, remember, it's kind of like a resume, what are your accomplishments? Obviously, we have to verify that they do live in the city or in the district.
Each applicant was asked the same set of questions.
Okay, so we'd have to ask them, would we have to ask them the same set of questions?
Yes, I would think so.
Legally? Let me rephrase that, legally, do we have to?
No, legally, you could make entirely different sets of questions for anyone, and they don't have to be identical.
It's probably a good idea, but from what I do remember, though, depending on who goes first, I guess it's just like a candidate forum, right? Depending on who goes first, you get the benefit of listening to that answer and responding. But, I mean, that's just, you know, kind of unavoidable. But that would be my suggestion, a completed application and then questions from the council, we did last time.
I'm good with that, and I think we should add that they have five minutes to introduce themselves at the beginning, so that they have an opportunity to say what they'd like to say first off. Is that clear direction, City Manager?
That is clear direction, so just for the benefit of the community and those online, the expectation is, the applicants will be submitted a written response by Wednesday, December the 11th, which will be included in the staff packet. That packet will be placed on the city's website. It is a public document, so any information that's provided within the packet is public. The expectation on December the 18th is that the applicants will be doing a maximum of a five-minute introduction where they introduce themselves. And then at that point, city council will be asking questions of the two applicants. It's all going to be public, and it's going to happen in this room.
That's correct. Okay, we have clear direction, moving on to future agenda items. Do my fellow colleagues have any future agenda items? I.
I.
Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
I have one. So several meetings back, we had a gentleman come up and speak on behalf of the airport advisory. And it's been brought to my attention that many of those meetings have not taken place because of a lack of a quorum. So how we go about the process of appointing these folks, I think we'd go a process by our individual districts, we appoint someone. But it seems like, again, lack of quorum means no business being done at the airport advisory. So I would like to bring back an item that would probably spell out if, in fact, it has to be an appointment by district, or if we can do a different, a different way of, a format of maybe selecting folks that are going to be committed to that airport advisory, that may have some relevant tangible interest in that airport advisory and bring back to the council as an advisory. Because if it's a lack of a quorum, then we're having a problem. We're having a problem. The same thing happened with the beautification committee. We don't have anyone in that committee either. So I'd like to see if we can bring back, well, more importantly, based on the comments that were heard from that gentleman there, that we don't have a quorum at the airport advisory. So I don't know if my colleagues would grant me that opportunity to bring that back for a future agenda item, and hopefully find different forms of bringing that back.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. I have three yeses. Oh, four. You're supposed to push your butt.
Oh, crap. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have five yeses and one no. And so we will bring that back to council. Moving on to council members' communications, I will start with Councilwoman newly again-elected Evans.
Thank you very much. What I have to say is, December the 22nd is the Christmas extravaganza, and I would like for everyone to come, you're all invited. Please come dressed in your best white and be ready to play games. You're all welcome. Congratulations to my colleagues. God bless each and every one of you. God bless you, and have a good night. Let's go home.
Thank you. Councilmember Montez.
I'd want to say congratulations to my colleagues who got back on, right, changes. And just remember, you asked for this. So, you know, for what that's worth, but hopefully we had a good Thanksgiving, and thank you for, everybody for participating. I know one of the reasons why I got involved is to have more civic engagement, and, you know, that's, I think it's a beautiful thing, watching everybody actually come and speak and be involved and voice their concerns. Because I always say, you know, if you don't get engaged, and I said it a little bit different last time, if you don't get engaged, you don't get involved, and I don't want to hear you complain. But I do like hearing when people complain, it's kind of weird. And if anybody does have any issues now, for real, anybody who has an issue can call Mayor Gago, she does represent everybody, she did before, but those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Viegas.
Oh, not to do the report.
Thank you. Council, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
I just wanted to congratulate Councilwoman Anita Evans on her reelection, congratulate Mayor Gago on her election, and congratulate Councilmember Viegas for his reelection. Obviously, mine went unopposed, again, I mentioned it earlier. That's a testament to the people of Madera. I hope that I can continue to serve you, and it's honor to serve you again for another four years. I appreciate the support and the confidence. And I hope that we, this council, moving forward, we also move the needle, just like we did before, and we continue to strive to keep Madera at our hearts and the interests of the people first. So with that, thank you again, and congratulations to all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez, and congratulations to yourself. Mayor, I mean, sorry, Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to my colleagues and on your election, reelection. But I would also like to thank all of the candidates that had the courage to run, that make sure that our democracy thrives. Thank you so much for participating. Like we say, you know, what Councilmember Montez said, like, you can't complain if you don't get involved, but also sometimes it's just like getting out there and voting. But to run, that really takes courage, so thank you to everyone. And I look forward to tomorrow's Christmas candlelight parade. Hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mejia. My comments are real short. I thank everyone for spending their evening with us tonight, and I look forward to moving this council in a positive leadership and harmonious ways of doing things in business here at the city. And again, Madera Eve and Lions, with conjunction with the city of Madera and Chamber of Congress, we will have our Christmas candlelight parade, steps off at 6:00. Mayor Gago is at the front directing traffic. We have some of us that will be giving out city neon necklaces, so you will see our electeds out there tomorrow on that parade route. And with that, we have no closed session, and our next meeting will be Wednesday, December 18, 2024. And at this time, I adjourn this council meeting. Thank you, everyone. Good night.